All right, we call the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for this September the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to welcome everyone who's in attendance in our audience this evening, as well as those who are joining us by social media at this time. Our first order of business, we're going to have Pastor Mac Jarvis of the Hudson First Baptist Church, who's going to lead in our invocation. Our pledge of allegiance will be followed by that with Commissioner Jeff Branch. And Pastor, I'd like for you to have just a moment of silence as we've lost one of our own first responders Sunday morning to a tragic accident from the Kings Creek Fire Department, Mr. Zach Hatton, and we'd just like to honor him this evening with just a moment of silence as we go into this meeting.
Absolutely. Well, let's begin that way, just a moment of silence.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today, first of all, to give you praise and thanksgiving. God, you are worthy of praise all the time. We thank you for this day. You make days like this, just like this, for us to rejoice and to be glad in. We thank you for the gift of life and all the blessings that come with it. Tonight, Lord, this community is heavy. Our hearts are heavy with the loss of this young man, this servant of our community, and so we're lifting his family up to you tonight, praying that you would comfort them and that you would be with them in a very, very special way as they suffer this great loss in their lives, and the people of this community as we suffer a loss of a good man. Tonight, Lord, specifically, we thank you for these who serve our community in this elected officials, this Board of Commissioners. We thank you for them. There are others here tonight as well, who serve our community in law enforcement, fire, rescue, and other ways, and we're grateful for those who service in these very, very special ways. My prayer is that you would be with them and you would help them as they serve our community. And now, Lord, for this particular meeting and these men who are leading our county, we, I pray that they would lead righteously, that they would judge fairly, and that they might live out the motto, the creed inscribed on the wall behind them, that they be men who trust in God. And then, Lord, will you superintend this meeting? And may you add your greater blessings to Caldwell County and to the state of North Carolina and to the United States of America. We're grateful people and offer a prayer of gratitude to you in the name of Jesus Christ the Lord. Amen.
Amen. Everyone face the flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Pastor Mac.
Thanks, Mac.
All right, are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, please, the Commission, we'd like to move item twelve to the new item seven and then adjust downward. This is presentation by our Health Director. She's helping with the critical incident stress debriefing for the young firefighter that was killed Saturday night, or Sunday morning, sorry.
Yes, sir. All right, here in the addition of moving item twelve up to item seven, then shifting everything down, what's the pleasure of the Board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's adjusted agenda as the county managers presented.
All right, any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to our first item on our agenda this evening, and we have a resolution in which we want to commemorate the September eleventh, two thousand and one tragedy, and it reads as follows. Whereas on Tuesday, September the eleventh, two thousand and one, the United States of America fell victim to a terrorist attack that claimed the lives of two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six individuals, and whereas an initiative to remember the lives of those lost during this terrorist attack, Patriot Day, was drafted by a joint resolution of the United States Congress on December the eighteenth, two thousand and one. And whereas Patriot Day honors those who perished as a result of an attack on the World Trade Center in New York City, and those who perished attempting to rescue individuals trapped under debris on high floors of those buildings, and whereas Patriot Day also honors those who perished as a result of the attacks on the Pentagon in Virginia and the lives that were lost on the United Airlines Flight ninety-three in Pennsylvania, and whereas Caldwell County honors those who selfishly risked their lives to rescue others and recognize those individuals as heroes, and whereas each year on September the eleventh, citizens across the United States of America are reminded how precious our freedom and safety truly are and are encouraged to pay tribute to those whose lives were tragically lost that day. And now therefore be it resolved, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Caldwell County, commemorate Patriot Day on September the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and express our deepest condolences for those lives that were lost in the two thousand and one terrorist attacks against our nation, as well as our highest gratitude for those who endeavor to preserve our liberties and our safety. And by reading the resolution, I'll make a motion that we adopt that this evening. And do I have any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And so it was a tragic day that we truly are in remembrance of, and we truly are very well reminded of that, those of us that lived through it. So, all right, anybody else? We'll move into item two then, and we have a presentation this evening of Irv Erto, and he's here to do a couple presentations, and the first one on our agenda is for the Deputy of the Year. So, welcome, Irv.
Thank you. Glad to be here. It's been our privilege for at least ten years to present awards from the Legion. We pay for the award, and the unit pays for it, for Sheriff's Deputy and EMT of the Year. And so I'm pleased to be here, and I know that for the people making the decisions, it's probably a real tough job to figure out who is it going to be this year. So, I'll let you tell, I'll let them tell their story. First, we'll do the Sheriff's Deputy of the Year Award, and I'm going to call on the new sheriff to make that presentation.
Hey, Sheriff.
Sheriff.
Councilman.
County manager.
Sir.
Each year, Post Twenty-nine gives us a call and asks us to our recommendation of their Employee of the Year, in addition to ours, which we have. My command staff and I evaluate the employees, and this year we've come up with a gentleman. He is a lifelong resident of Caldwell County. He's been here for fifty-eight years, not telling you how old he is, but he's got thirty-four years in law enforcement. He's just promoted to corporal. He does a great job. We never have any trouble out of him, and his name is Corporal Todd Corley. I'd like to ask him to come up.
He don't look a day over twenty-five. He don't look a day over twenty-five.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
You won't say anything?
Well, I'd just like to say I'm honored, as well as humbled. I worked with a lot of men and women who were well-served at awards like these, and it's just been awesome to do.
Yes, sir. Come on up and make a picture. Come on. We'll take time to make pictures. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
She's slower on the draw.
Y'all want to go forward after?
You want a picture with us, Corporal Corley?
Absolutely.
All right, be moving that way, man.
We're coming.
Just stand there.
If you want, we could just do a picture with everybody once all the awards are passed out.
Yep.
You okay?
Look at that first.
Right here. Three, two, one. Do one more.
I got it.
All right, so now you're...
You're going to have to come back down again.
I know, we're moving into the...
That's going to get your exercise tonight.
Right.
The next presentation is for the EMT of the Year, and I'm going to call on Jonathan Cook to do that presentation. He's right here, I'm right behind you.
Sneak up right behind you. This year's EMT of the Year Award was actually voted on by the peers during our EMS week. We've got some more awards to give out, hopefully at a later Commissioners' meeting, but this one is, was voted on by our peers, and this is, this individual's name is Brooke Rosier. She came to us part-time not too long ago and was attending Catawba Valley Community College to get her paramedic certification, which she still is in right now, but since being in that program and going full-time as a paramedic intern, she has received a two thousand and twenty-four Stephanie Lynn Gabriel Scholarship, which is a full-ride scholarship to complete the paramedic program, and she will be getting her Associate's Degree in Emergency Medical Science. She also completed the two thousand and twenty-four President's List, which is for individuals with a GPA of three point eight to four point oh. So, Brooke's been a great employee for us. We never have any issues. We don't hear any complaints. She comes to work and does her job, and she does the, she helps the citizens of this county extremely well, and we're very proud of her. So, Brooke?
Congratulations.
Come over to the front over here.
Yeah. You want our picture too, Brooke?
We don't want to push ourselves on that.
If that's what you wanted to do, that was just an option other than, other than just standing up and coming down every, every time a man is called, the option would be to be up here with everyone.
Congratulations. Well, you're welcome.
We got three lifesaver awards and another one, so we're getting a lot of awards tonight.
Okay. Well, once you've had all your exercise, we'll see how much you want to stand up there.
John Runyon's with us this evening to give us a little background.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So sometimes in this line of work, we find ourselves in unwinnable situations, and sometimes when we win, it doesn't really feel like much of a victory. On July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, Master Officer John Keiger, Sergeant Dustin Etheridge, and Lieutenant Isaac Hannah with the North Carolina Wildlife Commission found themselves in this exact situation. As most of you know, we had a double drowning on Wilson's Creek that day, where a mother and a small child lost their lives. What most people don't know is that on that day, these three officers were flagged down by a six-year-old child and told that there was a family drowning in Wilson's Creek. The officers raced to the water's edge when told this and recovered two victims from the water and attempted to administer CPR in an attempt to save these victims. The officers also rescued the six-year-old boy's father, who was trapped in a recirculating current and couldn't get out of the water. And we're here today to show our gratitude to these officers who risked their lives to save another. There's no doubt in my mind and many others that if it wasn't for these officers, that this young boy would have went home without a father as well. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
So which one we want to do first, John?
John Keiger. Master Officer John Keiger.
I got him.
Mr. Potter's going to read the commendation.
It's an honor and privilege to read this commendation. Caldwell County, North Carolina, commendation honoring Master Officer Jonathan R. Keiger. Whereas Caldwell County believes in the recognition of law enforcement officers for their heroic actions and outstanding efforts in service to the community, in keeping with this belief, Caldwell County is honoring North Carolina Wildlife Resource Officer, Master Officer John Keiger for his valor and lifesaving efforts. And whereas on July the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, Master Officer Jonathan R. Keiger was patrolling the Wilson's Creek Wild and Scenic River Wilderness Area and responded to a child in the roadway, saying his parents were in the water drowning. And whereas Master Officer Jonathan R. Keiger ran down to the river and selfishly entered the water to pull the first victim to shore, where he began lifesaving efforts with the assistance of Lieutenant Isaac Hannah and Sergeant Dustin Eldridge. And whereas Master Officer Jonathan R. Keiger, upon being made aware of the second infant victim downstream, re-entered the water with Sergeant Dustin Eldridge and together swam the infant to shore, where lifesaving efforts were started. And whereas Master Officer Jonathan R. Keiger re-entered the water a third time to rescue a man who was trapped in the recirculating current against the deep slippery rock face. And whereas Master Officer Jonathan R. Keiger prevented the life, the loss of an additional life during this tragic incident by swimming this person to safety of the shore where he, where they pulled, they both pulled from the river by Sergeant Dustin, Sergeant Dustin Eldridge. Now therefore, on behalf of the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Caldwell County, do hereby commend North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission Master Officer Jonathan R. Keiger for his great courage and disregard of his own life, safety, and present him with a law enforcement award of valor and lifesaving.
We'll get photos at the end with all y'all, so.
Sergeant Dustin Etheridge.
It is my honor and privilege to read the commendation honoring Sergeant Dustin Etheridge. Whereas Caldwell County believes in the recognition of law enforcement officers for their heroic actions and outstanding efforts in service to the community, in keeping with this belief, Caldwell County is honoring North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission Officer Sergeant Dustin Etheridge for his valor and lifesaving efforts. And whereas on July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, Sergeant Dustin Etheridge was patrolling the Wilson's Creek Wild and Scenic River Wilderness Area and responded to a child in the roadway, saying his parents were in the water and drowning. And whereas Sergeant Dustin Etheridge ran down to the river to assist Master Officer Jonathan Keiger and Lieutenant Isaac Hannah. Upon arriving, he found Master Officer Keiger performing CPR on a drowning victim that he had pulled from the water. Sergeant Etheridge ran back to his vehicles to gather throw bags and a life jacket that would be later instrumental in saving lives. And whereas Sergeant Dustin Etheridge, upon his return to the river, was being made aware of a second infant victim downstream, where he selfishly entered the water with Master Officer Jonathan Keiger, who together swam the infant to shore, where lifesaving efforts were started. And whereas Sergeant Dustin Etheridge was performing CPR when Master Officer Keiger re-entered the water to rescue a man who was trapped in a recirculating current against a slippery rock face. And whereas Sergeant Dustin Etheridge prevented the loss of an additional life during this tragic incident by dragging both the victim and Master Officer Keiger to safety of the shore with the lifesaving equipment he retrieved earlier in response to the drowning. Now therefore, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners of North Carolina and the citizens of Caldwell County do hereby commend North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission Officer Dustin, Sergeant Dustin Etheridge for his great courage and disregard for his own safety, and present him with the law enforcement awards for valor and lifesaving. Congratulations.
It's my honor to read this one. Caldwell County, North Carolina, commendation honoring Lieutenant Isaac Hannah. Whereas Caldwell County believes in the recognition of law enforcement officers for their heroic actions and outstanding efforts in service to the community, in keeping with this belief, Caldwell County is honoring North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission Lieutenant Isaac Hannah for his valor and lifesaving efforts. And whereas on July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, Lieutenant Isaac Hannah was patrolling the Wilson's Creek Wild and Scenic River Wilderness Area and responded to a child in the roadway, saying his parents were in the water drowning. And whereas Lieutenant Isaac Hannah ran down to the river to assist Master Officer Jonathan Keiger and Sergeant Dustin Etheridge. Upon arriving, he found Master Officer Keiger performing CPR on a drowning victim that he had pulled from the water. Lieutenant Hannah yelled out to a man in the water, asking if there was anyone else, and this is when he was made aware of an infant victim downstream. And whereas Lieutenant Isaac Hannah pointed out the location of the infant and threw his lifesaving equipment to Master Officer Jonathan Keiger and Sergeant Etheridge, who swam into the river for the child, and he continued the lifesaving efforts on the first victim. And whereas Lieutenant Isaac Hannah, while performing CPR, observed that the third person in the water was in distress and trapped in a recirculating current against a steep slippery rock face. And whereas Lieutenant Isaac Hannah prevented the loss of an additional life during this tragic incident by maintaining his situational awareness and redirecting the rescue efforts to pull the distressed man safely from the water. Now therefore, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners, North Carolina, and the citizens of Caldwell County do hereby commend North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission Lieutenant Isaac Hannah for his great courage and quick response in recognition to the severity of the situation, and present him with the law enforcement awards for valor and lifesaving. Congratulations. No, that's for the...
Put this way, and three, two, one.
One more real quick. But I don't have anyone's heads cut off. Perfect, perfect. One, two, three. There we go. That should do it. Thank you.
All right, to ratify all of those, I need a motion that we adopt all three of those lifesaving valor awards and enter it as an end to our minutes. So do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve all these commendations as were read by the Commissioners.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And so thank you again, gentlemen, for your efforts there. Next is Richard Gillan. He is here to present a lifesaving award through animal care. And before going farther, does that mean it's getting raises or anything to you?
Can't we say that? All in favor say aye.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman, Council, Manager. Just to give you a little bit of backstory before I read the resolution, on July twenty-fifth, we had a citizen in our county that was walking down a side street in Granite Falls, where he was unprovoked attacked by a pit bull. He couldn't get away from him after several attempts, or seven attempts at being knocked to the ground. Tabitha Vincent and Samantha Diaz heard him scream and ran to his aid. So I'll read the resolution for you. Whereas on July twenty-fifth, a citizen was walking on a sidewalk on Highland Avenue in Granite Falls near Brockford Inn, when the citizen was a victim of an unprovoked attack by four pit bull dogs. And whereas during the attack, all four dogs left the property and ran across the roadway to the sidewalk where the citizen was, surrounding the citizen. And whereas despite the citizen's efforts to try to run away, the dogs knocked him to the ground and started biting him. The citizen got back up and once again attempted to run away, but was knocked down to the ground six more times, all while the dogs continued biting him the entire time. And whereas Tabitha Vincent and Samantha Diaz Hernandez had just got off of work at Brockford Inn when they observed the attack occur, and upon hearing the citizen yell for help, both individuals rushed to the citizen's side. Samantha and Tabitha kicked the dogs off the citizen and took him to a staircase to the side of the building. There, Tabitha called nine-one-one to get the citizen's help for his injuries. And whereas Samantha and Tabitha demonstrated a selfless and courageous act of rendering aid in a sudden and unexpected situation, which resulted in the preservation of life. And now therefore be it resolved that the Caldwell County Commissioners honor Tabitha Vincent and Samantha Diaz Hernandez for their selfless display of heroic and lifesaving efforts. Tabitha is with us tonight, Samantha is not with us. So Samantha, if you'd come up? Tabitha, if you'd come up, I'm sorry.
We would like to give you...
Yes, be careful. It's heavy. It's a big piece of glass. I'll read it out to everybody. It says Caldwell County Citizen, a citizen's lifesaving award presented to Tabitha Vincent in recognition of your selfless and courageous act of rendering aid in a sudden and unexpected situation which resulted in the preservation of life. Presented by Caldwell County Commissioners and Caldwell County Animal Care and Enforcement.
Thank you.
You want us to come down here too?
Okay.
Let's break something down.
Hi guys. Put this way in three, two, one.
Right. That does it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as you're returning to your seats, I want to ask pardon and let's go ahead and move Ms. Anna Martin and the Public Health Department in front of foothills just because she can get to that other event for that critical instance stress debris.
Yes, sir. So Ms. Martin, you come on ahead and bring your Health Department organizational chart revision for us.
Thank you for moving me around so I can assist Kings Creek and our fellow coworkers. And please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. The mother Jessica works with us at the Health Department and grandmother was a former employee of the Health Department, so sneering dear to our hearts. So just within your packet, you should have an updated organizational chart. I just want to bring this to your attention just because we want to move a few positions. Currently, we have two nurse vacancies in our maternity clinic with one nurse vacancy in maternity for over a year. Likewise, our C-Mark position, which is a case management position in child health, have had one nurse vacancy for the same time. We know that there's a possibility at the state level in 2026, the C-Mark and SIMHARP, which are the case management programs, may be transferred to the health plans, meaning we would no longer provide those services. However, this is not guaranteed. At this point, no one really knows what will happen, is what we keep getting told. At this time, we would like to move the two nurses from C-Mark to half-C-Mark and half maternity clinic and change the currently vacant position from a nurse to a social worker position in C-Mark since this caseworker position can be a social worker or a nurse. And I just wanted to mention this, per our consolidated agreement that we sign every year that goes to the state level, if any health department dissolves a service or staff leave, the local health department is still responsible for completing services. So with me making this move, we will be fully staffed, we'll be able to complete our services, and hopefully finding a social worker will be able to complete the C-Mark services with the half and half nurses doing that.
All right. And this was presented to the Board of Health and they passed off on it as well. So it comes to us this evening for action. So what is the pleasure of the board in adopting this new Health Department organizational chart revision?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Health Department organizational chart revision as explained by our health.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. So thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Now, I think I need to go back one step.
Foothills.
And yes, well, one step in front of that and adopt the lifesaving award that we presented and ratify that. So do I hear a motion that we adopt that resolution as presented this evening and awarded?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt that resolution.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. So thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Now, I think I need to go back one step.
Foothills.
And yes, well, one step in front of that and adopt the lifesaving award that we presented and ratify that. So do I hear a motion that we adopt that resolution as presented this evening and awarded?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt that resolution.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That gets that in the minutes on the legal side. I got too fast, sorry. So now that brings us to a report from the Foothills Regional Airport, and Mr. Brent Brinkley is with us this evening. So welcome, Brent.
Thank you. Hello, commissioners, county manager. Thank y'all for having me today. My name's Brent Brinkley and I'm the airport manager at Foothills Regional Airport. I'm here today to give you updates on the current operation and future developments at the airport. The Foothills Airport is supported by Caldwell County, the city of Lenore, Burke County, and the city of Morganton. Caldwell County's support has had major impacts on the airport and its current developments. Jeff Branch is our vice chairman. We appreciate the guidance and support you've given us over the years. Donald Duncan has recently helped by taking a leading role in communicating our needs to the local legislators, which led to us receiving a $6 million grant from the state budget this year. That took representatives from all four of our supporting entities expressing our needs directly to the local legislators. We're very thankful for Representative Hall and Representative Blackwell for their efforts on this project also. Ashley Bullock and her team at Economic Development have been working hard to promote future growth at the airport. They recently received a $50,000 Golden Leaf Grant for due diligence on our hangar development project at the airport. We appreciate all your support. The airport and local communities will reap the benefits of your hard work for many years. This is a short video showing a portion of the transient traffic flying in and out of the airport in 2023. This will help give you an idea of how significant the impact your local airport has. If you can see the timeline at the top, the video starts in January and plays through each month of 2023. The airport is a major driver of the local economic engine. When new businesses are looking at our area for development, we see many of their professional planners, engineers, and executives flying in to see the area. We typically see them several times during the building and planning stages, and once their business is up and running, we're here to support them as needed. We're seeing a significant growth in tourism traffic. We also have a lot of transit customers coming in and out that have new real estate in the All the flights that you see are spending money locally on food, rental cars, fuel, hotels, et cetera, which all have major impact on our local economy. We have medical, search and rescue, and aerial firefighting flights coming in and out as We also have flight training for anyone working towards a future career as a pilot or if they're just wanting to do it for fun or personal travel. All airport revenues for operations go directly into capital projects and maintaining the airport.
That's pretty impressive right there, Brent. Thank you for showing us that.
It's even surprising for me to look back and see through the years and see all the traffic coming in and out.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have to admit that, you know, I knew the airport was used, but I didn't realize it was used that much across the region. It's a, so you guys are doing a good job out there.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the support you guys have given us. Recently, the NC Division of Aviation completed an economic impact study of all the airports in North Carolina. That study showed that our airport had a $22 million economic impact, supported 100 jobs, and generated over $1 million in tax revenue. We have around 17,000 operations per year and 65 home-based aircraft. This drawing shows the majority of our planned projects. The most recent project that we completed was an access road on the backside of the airport to keep vehicle traffic off the ramp and repave the old asphalt at the airport. We also completed a land acquisition for the runway 21 protection zone to protect our approach at the airport. As mentioned earlier, our airport has 65 home-based aircraft. In addition to those, we have a waiting list of 90 people who are wanting to move their aircraft to our airport. It's been one of our top priorities to find a solution to that hangar shortage. Without that additional hangar space, our growth has just basically come to a halt. So that's, that's what we're working on right now. We're currently in a bidding phase of an eight-unit T-hanger. We, you see the orange section up here on the, on the chart, the terminal area expansion phase. That's the area the Golden Leaf funds will be used and also the, the $6 million. That's where the majority will go to build hangars in that area. We're in the process of extending our taxiway to full length. This will increase the safety for all the aircraft coming in and out of the airport because it's going to decrease the amount of time that they have to be on the active We've completed the design and environmental and we're waiting on funding to start construction. This is a top project in the state of North Carolina, and we're hoping to see, receive the first half of the funding next year. We've also requested grant funding for a new terminal building, and we're hopeful to get that in the next five to 10 years as our current terminal building is really starting to show its age. We've got a couple events coming up. We've got a joint business after hours with the Burke and Caldwell Chambers of Commerce on October 24th from 4:30 to 5, or 4:30 to 7:30. And on Saturday, December the 7th, we've got our annual Santa Claus fly-in. We're still waiting on the phone call from Santa to see what time he'll be coming that day, but we'll be posting that on Facebook whenever the time comes. But that's all I had. I just want to thank y'all for the opportunity to be here and present this to you, and I really appreciate all the support that you guys have given the airport, and just want to see if you guys have any questions.
And just like I said, I'm on that airport board and Brent's doing a great job for us out there. Everything's going smooth. It was a rocky road several years ago, but things have turned around. It's amazing the size of planes that are coming in out there. It's a, it's a, it's growing and needs to grow more. And lots of the funding we do is federal funding instead of state funding.
Yeah. How many hangars would that, that grant money be?
We're still trying to determine that. Depends on how much asphalt that we have to pay for with this project. We've got the taxiway project going on and we're hoping that that's going to take a lot, take care of a lot of the funds that's going to, that we would have to pay for asphalt otherwise. It's a pretty large chunk of asphalt that we're going to have to give access to the runway with.
And when you're dealing with federal money, everything costs a lot.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Lot more red tape to go through when you're dealing with an airport. So we found that out. All right. Anybody else? Thank you, Brent.
Thank y'all.
We appreciate you coming tonight.
Appreciate y'all.
All right. Next, we have on our agenda a public hearing that we've got scheduled for Wing and Biddy Way. And Micah, is Micah here?
I'm going to handle it.
You're going to handle it?
Yep.
All right. So start us off.
We had a request to rename a street, but it's actually inside the Sawmill City Limits. Most of our other municipalities named their own streets and then sent it to the county for approval to make sure it doesn't conflict with 911 addressing. So in case you had, for example, a Bellevue Street in Hudson and a Bellevue Street in Granite, that might cause some conflict on dispatching. So Town of Sawmill is in the process of actually revisiting that policy and they may actually start naming their own. In the meantime, this family has requested that the Board of Commissioners continue this hearing after you open it up to be determined at a later date. They have a lot of the things. It's a 13-acre site. They've already asked for permits for septic tank for one home, and they want to wait and make sure they get all the process right before they name the street. And it is a dedicated public right of way that's shared between two adjoining lots, 30 feet on either side. So that'll be up to them and the town and their zoning to establish at a later date.
All right. So with that recommendation, I'll declare the public hearing open and we'll entertain a motion that we continue that public hearing until a later date when they require or request again the naming of this street for Wing and Biddy Way.
Same move.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so that carries unanimously and it is held open until a later date. Next, we have Shelley Stevens with us this evening, and she's here about a public hearing for a text amendment 2024-1. And so welcome, Shelley.
Thank you and good evening. So occasionally we'll get requests from citizens for text amendments to our ordinances, and we have one of those today. So Terry Taylor would like to request a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, and specifically the amendment would remove setback requirements where party walls are utilized in the general business district. And this means that if a building crosses a side or rear slash front property line, meaning it crosses over into two different properties in the general business district, they could still have multiple tenants in the building because technically our ordinance currently requires setbacks, you know, between businesses. So this isn't a super common occurrence, but I do agree with her request in my professional opinion, and so does the planning board, that this would be a good addition to have to our ordinance. And so by state law, we actually have to have a consistency statement, not the reasonableness part with the rezoning, but the consistency statement. And that's in your packets, and I have some spare copies if needed. But the planning board did recommend approval and approval of the following consistency statement, and that is approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest because the amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, which recommends best practices such as adding updates that allow for more flexible service to citizens and keeping ordinances in alignment with health, safety, and welfare of the community within the context of the North Carolina general statutes. And with that would be a motion to approve the amendment. And then I also have a draft denial if you choose not to approve and want to use that.
So thank you for the report. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone is here to speak either for or against this text amendment. So I see none, hear none, no one signed up. So we'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll entertain a motion from the commissioners to adopt the consistency statement as read from our planning director, Ms. Shelley Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we accept the statement as read by Shelley Stevens.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. So thank you for that, and that leads us into the next public hearing, a rezoning request, I think. So Ms. Stevens?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Thank you very much. This is our fourth rezoning request of the year, and as always, I will give an overview and then speak to its consistency with the comprehensive plan and some other elements relating to public health, safety, and welfare for the request, and then give the planning board's recommendation. So this one in particular is a request to move from R-20, which is single-family residential, and RA-20 residential agricultural zoning to general business zoning. And the applicant and property owner is Reginald Ford. The location of the site, and we'll look at a, an aerial of it here in a minute, is Blowing Rock Boulevard, also known as 321, for those who aren't as familiar with the area who might be listening. And that's in northern Caldwell County, right through the middle of Caldwell County. And the site conditions are it's a field and it's adjacent 321, and it has some woods in the back of the field. There's no special flood hazard area or any type of flood hazard area, no floodway because there's no special flood hazard area, and also no watershed protected or critical area in that location. It's 8.31 acres according to GIS, and again, it's zoned R-20 and RA-20, and we'll look at that momentarily. The surrounding zoning is the same. It's R-20 and RA-20, and he's requesting general business zoning. So this is what it would look like if you're wanting a visual of that zoning. The yellow is the R-20, the green is the RA-20. And then something that we have to do by state law is look within our comprehensive plan, which is a document created based on public input that includes bylaw a future land use map that shows suggested land use designations, zoning districts as well for future rezonings and for future uses. And so on this area of the map, you see there on 321, the northern part of it, there is what is labeled as US 321 overlay in the legend, and that is a commercial corridor suggestion. corridor suggestion based on public input. So the rezoning would be located within that overlay. And this is an aerial of the site, so you can see the field there that I mentioned, and then the woods behind it. And there is a twelve-inch water line along three-twenty-one, which relates to health, safety, and welfare, which again, we have to consider for the entire general business district that may be going there. And there's also three-phase power behind the site, behind the property, and there is natural gas adjacent to the property as well. So when we think about this, we think about all potential uses that could go in general business in terms of health, safety, and welfare by law. And that's why I provided that information about the water and the power. And just for your information, the average annual daily traffic number is sixteen, I believe, sixteen hundred per day, yeah, or sixteen thousand, I'm sorry, per day as of twenty-twenty-two. So those are the most recent numbers we have on that. And then we have to have a consistency statement, and the planning board does recommend approval of this consistency statement, followed by a motion to approve the rezoning request. And I do have an alternate statement in your packets as well, and you can create your own if you want.
All right. So here in the recommendation of our planner, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone's here to speak either for or against this rezoning request. I know our owners are here, so thank y'all for being here tonight. You don't want to say anything? You don't have to. All right. Yes, sir. So no one signed up, so I'll declare the public hearing closed, and then ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting this request and the consistency statement as has been provided by Ms. Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept this recommendation provided by our planning board and Ms. Stevens, along with the consistency statement that she read.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
A lot of, lot of work going on for you.
There is, yeah. It's crazy. I try to keep it short and sweet up here, but it is crazy over there.
Yeah.
So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank y'all for being here, Reg.
Thanks, Reggie.
All right. So that brings us to our reevaluation schedule of values and our tax assessor and entrepreneur of all that, Mr. Josh Angle. So I think he's going to join us somehow by phone, video, or how are we doing that?
Via team's meeting, yes, sir. They're dialing him up now. He's on the line, and he'll bring him up, and he's got a quick presentation for y'all, and then you have some workbooks here for you to take with you.
Plenty of reading.
I realize this is popped in through speakers.
Am I supposed to answer?
Yeah.
Are you there, Josh?
Yes, sir.
All right. We got you.
All right. Just waiting for Eric to, uh, join the team's meeting here.
What part of Hawaii are you calling us from?
The Sawmill side.
You keep that stuff up there on your street, Josh? Don't just come over there in my naked woods.
No, me.
Well, we tried it earlier today, and it was working. We'll see how it goes. We'll blame Microsoft for this one.
It's the way it happens at work, too.
Yeah. When you need it, it, it fails. I know what the problem is. Everybody come home, started watching Netflix, and it's killed the signal.
Mike, you want to sing for us while we're entertaining us a little bit?
No, I'm good.
David, you want to sing?
Technical difficulties, please stand by.
Chief has to go sing for us.
Yeah. There it comes.
Switching from Eric to me. So the first item is the twenty-twenty-five schedule of values. And so, let me see here. I hit the right button. In accordance with North Carolina general statute one-oh-five-three-seventeen-one, I come before you to present the schedule of values for the twenty-twenty-five revaluation. The schedule of values is defined as a manual to describe the methodology and procedures for appraising real estate at market value at the time of the county's most recent general appraisal. Each of you have received a copy for this meeting. A copy is also made available in the tax office, and we created a link to the manual on Caldwell County NCTax.com website. And so that's a little bit about what the presentation is for tonight. Some stats that I found kind of intriguing coming into twenty-twenty-five, since the twenty-twenty-one revaluation, we have a parcel count of fifty-two thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-two. Of course, that's as of a few days ago, and that's a growth of three-hundred-and-eighteen parcels due to splits and subdivisions. We've also saw an additional, over seven-hundred additional buildings added to the tax base since twenty-twenty-one. So that's been a lot of work, and I definitely want to take a moment to thank my team for all they've done. They've worked very hard towards the revaluation, and they've done it all while picking up the increased volume that our friends from over at building inspections keep permitting. And so kudos to those guys over there as well. They're doing a great job. And so this evening, I'm coming before you to request a motion to schedule a public hearing for the schedule of values on October fourteenth, and for you to direct the clerk to the board to run an ad in accordance with North Carolina general statute one-oh-five-three-seventeen-two. And so with that presentation, I'll be glad to answer any questions that may be.
All right. So thank you, Josh, and I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the schedule for the public hearing on October the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Anybody make that motion for me?
I make the motion that we approve the schedule of values.
All right. And with that approval, that will then duly authorize a clerk to advertise for the public hearing per the statutory requirements. So have a motion to adopt the reevaluation schedule of values for our next meeting on October the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And so that will run, and then you have next for us, Josh, the twenty-fourteen tax release.
Yes, sir. Each year, we present the ten-year-old delinquent taxes to you. Per North Carolina general statute one-oh-five-three-seventy-eight-A, these taxes are no longer collectible by enforced collection. For two thousand fourteen, the total number of real and personal property taxes outstanding is eighty-seven thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. This number was revised today, and it might be slightly different from what you're seeing in your packet. But this evening, I'm requesting to the board for a release of these ten-year-old delinquent taxes.
All right. So here in the request from our tax administrator, he's asking, and I'll just go ahead and make this in the form of a motion that we release the taxes in the amount of eighty-seven thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, which is relevant to the two thousand fourteen tax year. Now, are there any questions or comments in relation to that?
I'd like to make a comment. This tax office has done an outstanding job in, under Josh's tenure. I believe this is half of what it was last year, and is by far the lowest outstanding taxes in the history that we can find in Caldwell County.
I was getting ready to ask that question, actually, so thank you for sharing.
I can't remember the ratio. Josh may know off the top of his head, but it, it is significantly lower number, which means we're collecting more and your people are paying, and it's a good sign of a healthy economy as well.
Yes, sir.
I don't remember the exact number, but if I recall correctly, this is the lowest write-off we've had since two thousand fourteen, and so, and that's not credit to myself, that's credit to the county and the employees that work in my department. I'm very blessed. We've got a great team up there.
Yes, sir. We appreciate all those efforts, and yours as well. So have a motion. I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. So I think that's all we had for you, Josh.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Unless you want to give us a weather report from Hawaii.
I, I don't know what it is exactly.
What's it like in Sawmills?
Downtown Sawmills.
I can help you out there.
Hope you get the feeling better, bud.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for the public's knowledge, and the reason we had to do that this evening is we're on a time constraint in adopting these. We couldn't push them off for another month because it wouldn't meet all the state guidelines and requirements that we have to do for a reevaluation process. So we appreciate Josh being able to join in with us this evening. So item twelve's already been disposed of, and that brings us to Chief Deputy Jonathan Kirby, and a new organizational chart that is in place now in the sheriff's office.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, sir.
County attorney. What I bring to the agenda, something that Sheriff Jones, our retired sheriff, wanted to do in his departure is classify the chief deputy spot whichever agency has, and we've had one, and compared to other agencies smaller than ours, they have a major as well with a chief deputy. And that's the only new thing, and the only other thing that we've done with the organizational chart is we've moved the narcotics division out from under the investigative division and put it straight where they report to the chief deputy and the sheriff. That's just to keep the case assignments and stuff that they're working, less hands in the pot to give somebody a tip.
So, and you, just to clarify, Jonathan, y'all have moved some folks around or some positions around within the department to accomplish this, and, and it's all by act, really, of, of a new sheriff appointment.
Yes, sir.
So everybody's been kind of moving and shuffling around over there.
We lost one, and that was when sheriff retired, and our new, new sheriff Bean, he moved this in to help our department grow.
Yeah.
I think we got seven promotions out of just restructuring and adding one new, it's not a new position, we just reclassified a position.
Yes, sir. All right. And I think we've had that for our review. So is there any questions in reference to this organizational chart from the board? Hear and none? Do I hear a motion that we adopt this for the sheriff's office organizational chart revision?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the sheriff's office organizational chart revision.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That brings us then to our consent agenda, and our county manager, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll present the consent agenda real quick. Item fourteen is the first budget revision to take into the county budget a strap grant, which is stream bank restoration money that the state funds, the amount of half a million dollars. This is nearly double what we've had in the past. Our staff has put this to good use in protecting resources around the county, most notably in the Lower Creek area. We were able to protect stream banks, protect people's property, and also the preservation utilities. We have the same opportunity here to work on the Yacken River Corridor and along Happy Valley Greenway, and this will not be repairs to the greenway itself, but stabilize the bank so we can preserve that asset in that community. And our staff is here tonight if you have any questions, and they did a great presentation for us, I believe, in January, February, if I remember right, for how we spent the money in twenty-twenty-three. And we'll continue to apply for this again. As you know, we're looking at a future grant for potential economic development incentive as well. Stream bank restoration's become a huge portion, a huge part for us.
I do have one question for staff. Will this take care of that problem there where the walkway is, where the trail is?
Ultimately, yes, that is the plan, is we have full stream restoration of that section.
We rebuild the stream bank on both sides. I think what we'll be able to do is put in the greenway.
Right. Got it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Item fifteen is departmental fund transfer from, from the sheriff's office to economic development for the lease of a potential warehousing space for seventy-two thousand dollars annually. We budgeted there the sheriff's office for their use. Item sixteen is to begin the, our long fight for the inter-basin transfer opposition to the city of Charlotte's next application. The initial request is twenty-seven thousand dollars, but as we know, that doesn't include marketing or engineering, so we're recommending that we reserve for this fiscal year sixty thousand dollars in the water fund to begin that process, and obviously, they may come back for more in the future. We'll just see how it progresses. Future conversations about this will likely be under attorney-client privilege, will probably under contract with an attorney through the COG. It will be an inter-local agreement between all the participating counties and municipalities in that, that legal battle. So future briefings will probably be done private. Animal care enforcement had received donated funds of thirty-five hundred dollars. This will help us pay for the next round of rabies vaccines. And by the way, that is October nineteenth. Thank you, sir. Over at the fairgrounds, we did over six-hundred-and-seventy, six-hundred-and-fifty last time? Six-eighty last time. Thank you, sir. And we're probably looking to see to do that again. As you know, we have quite a bit of rabies in our county, and this helps us control the spread of that. This also will help pay for dogs' beds for our animal shelter as well, so we can keep them up off the floor, and it's the frames for that. Next is our sheriff's office replacement vehicle. We need to, we're trading in a vehicle and using asset seizure funds. This is not general fund money, but this is money that we take off of drug dealers and criminals and things like that to replace this vehicle. Budget revision, health department agreement addendum. This is ninety-eight thousand dollars. It goes toward salaries for retention and training. There is no local match out of our budget. The findings of fact in item twenty, that is last month's findings of facts that you have to approve from the Grace Chapel cell tower. Let's see. Also, the item twenty-one is the application for a grant. Oh, I believe our tax administrator, we may have missed some. They did, sir. Yeah. Yeah. I'll make sure that's included. We may need to revise the motion, and we'll go back and do that as soon as I catch this.
Carry on, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Technology, man, it's just, it's coming at you from all sides.
It's live.
Yeah, it's live. That's right. Grace Chapel cell tower, you need to approve the findings of facts. Item twenty-one is an application for the National Police Association grant. This is a thousand dollars to go toward training materials and education for our explorer program. There is no match required from the county. Item twenty-two, also for our explorer program, this is an application for the NRA Foundation to Teach Freedom Grant. This is fifty-four hundred dollars to teach gun safety to our explorer program attendees and supplies equipment, airsoft weapons, so that it's a safer way to teach handgun use and proper use of firearms. Also, an application from Catawba Valley Community Foundation. This is for the sheriff's summer kids grant, which is our camp, summer camp program for the sheriff's office to try to recruit and teach people about proper officer etiquette and how to interact with police officers. No match required from the county. That's an estimated twenty-five hundred dollars in grant funds in the future. Another one is the application for the Guardian Angel Safety Grant, thirty-six hundred dollars. If we get this, this If we get this, this will be for shoulder lights to allow officers to have light protection when they're working at night and to have also a beacon. So if an officer goes down, the light can go off. You can see it from miles away, allows us to help identify an officer quicker. This would pay for 32 units if we received the grant. Another one is the application for the Dickey Foundation Grant. This is Dickey's barbecue. We like barbecue, right? This is for tactical emergency equipment used for the K-9 officers for K-9 care and training to go with that. Also, we have the, that's a $6,750 grant with a local match of $1,350 if we do get it. That's an 80/20 program. Another item for decision is the interim lease for office space with Norcom Emergency Management. Their office lease is running out. It's located there on the border of Hickory, Newton, and Conover. That lease is running out for them, and they wanted to wait till after hurricane season. And speak of the devil, we got two more storms out in the Gulf waiting on us right now. And this would allow them to lease four offices with a conference room on the third floor and the HHS building on the DSS side. This is in preparation for them making their move into the new comm center once it's constructed. And they're very happy with that. There's no money to be exchanged, but it'd be great to have them on site here in our county. So if something does go down, we've got immediate access to the state. And by the way, they were so helpful in the water line break the other night. That involved multiple agencies around the county there in Granite Falls. Item 27, railroad assessment. This is Stone Consulting. The progenitors of that company did a railroad consulting and assessment for us in 2005, which was the Gould study. The gentleman, Mr. Gould, taught the gentlemen that are doing Stone Consulting, and this will give us an assessment of the value of the railroad, what needs to be repaired, what needs to be fixed. That total cost is $24,700. That will be shared amongst the three counties and the six municipalities. Catawba County, I'm sorry, Catawba County share in Burke Counties and City of Hickory's is about $6,000. For the municipalities in Caldwell County is $19,234. I recommend that we use our sales tax rate investment fund because all the municipalities, along with the county, pay into that fund, and it's an economic development project and use that. And so, and it's based on track mileage inside those different jurisdictions. So it's pro-rated share for everybody. And then you have the minutes for Item 28, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Duncan? Or do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager's presented.
All right. I want to give kudos, before I ask for the vote, to, I think DePell is probably a part of about, what, eight grants right there that he's riding through the sheriff's office, so.
At least seven, yes, maybe eight, yeah.
So he's doing a great job, and I just wanted to say that out loud to him and to the sheriff, if the sheriff's still here. We appreciate him getting those grants that help us on down the road. And then I wanted to mention the inter basin transfer opposition funds, just as a comment from the board of commissioners, we are fighting that at every level. And our public needs to know that we're fighting it because I don't think some of them realize how hard we are fighting it. And a lot of our fight has to be done behind the scenes. It can't be out front, just like the confidentiality of attorney-client privileges. And so we're hearing things and doing things that necessarily the public doesn't necessarily know at this point, but just trust that we are. And we just wanted to make that, I did, as an announcement, that we are certainly doing everything we can to stop that.
Mr. Chair, can I add to your comment?
Yes, sir.
The Western Piedmont Council of Governments is kind of spearheading that. Caldwell County, along with all counties that are along the Catawba River chain from all the way to McDowell, where the mouth of the river begins, all the way down through Fort Mill, South Carolina, they're all in this fight together. And so it's just not us by ourselves. The COG, along with the counties all included, we have attained, retained an attorney and lobbyist to help us in the legislature. We have senators and local legislators working on bills to help in this process. It's going to be a long, hard fought process, but just wanted to add that to your comment.
Yes, sir. All right.
And you know, this is something that, it's really not going to matter to us as much as it will our kids and grandkids and stuff.
Oh, yeah, generations to come. That's what it'll really affect. So, all right. So with the motion to adopt the consent agenda, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Now, is there something we need to do for Mr. Angle?
Yes, Mr. Angle asked that we correct the motion or amend the motion to include this statement, just so we have everything correct with the general statutes. I come before you this evening to request a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Schedule of Values on October 14th, 2024, and for the board to direct the clerk to the board to run an ad in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes 105, high and 317, subparagraph two. So somebody want to take that as a motion?
Who made the other motion?
Did I make the other motion?
You did, sir.
So I will amend my motion to...
Read as I just stated.
Read as you just stated. Yes, sir. I was waiting for you to repeat that. No.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries then as well. And that leads us to an adjournment. And unless somebody has something, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for being here, and thank you for watching.